People are getting in. All right, let's get back to this then. So I'm reconvening now at 7:31. Before we begin, I'm going to read the second part of our announcement of public notice. Since we're on Zoom right now. So during this meeting, we asked that all members of the public mute themselves unless they are speaking during a public comment period. If we needed, we may mute you ourselves. You may leave your video on or off for your option. If we experience bandwidth issues and believe that limiting video could help, we may do so. We will have at least two public comment periods. If at that time you wish to speak, please raise your blue virtual hand in Zoom and wait for me to call on you. If you cannot raise your virtual hand, or if I miss your virtual hand, please turn on your video camera and raise your actual hand. New Jersey law requires us to inform you that all commenters must behave appropriately. In Highland Park, this means no screaming, obscenities, or inappropriate video displays. In the event of a speaker's inappropriate behavior, they will be muted, and we will come back to them at a later time. If the speaker is the final commenter at the final, last, final comment period, we will invite them to return at our next meeting. We are going to the model of having two public comment periods. One, which is so that the public doesn't have to stay up till all hours of the evening. Will be right after the superintendent's report, or virtually after the superintendent's report, before the committee board reports. And the second one will be after the, after the board reviews our different agenda sections. So, so Linda, could we have the pledge of allegiance, please?
One second.
Oh, Scott, excuse me.
Well, Dr. Taylor will provide.
Yes, indeed.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
A nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty.
And justice.
And justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Linda. So we had, we had three communications to the board. One from Jen Voorhees on mask enforcement, one from Ethan Schoolman on returning students to the classroom, and one from Rob Scott about the community-wide vaccine event. This was an event held last night by the Highland Park Vax Help Group, talking about vaccinations for people, all people, but also people under 18 years old, the 16 and 17-year-olds, which I'm going to say a few words on after Dr. Taylor is finished with his remarks. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So I'd like to move those both, the virtual public, well, I'll move the first one. So I'll move to approve the virtual public workshop meeting on March 15th. Do I have a second?
No, no. Point of order?
Yes.
This is a workshop meeting. We are not voting.
Oh, we're not going to vote on these. Sorry.
Right, I forgot too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course. We are voting on the negotiations, though.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sorry, that confused me. Okay, so we have them on the agenda. We'll vote on those next time. That's a, obviously, a voting meeting. And we will have our student representative report on IC Polly. So Polly, mute yourself and take over.
Yeah, hi, everyone.
Hi.
So, starting with the high school, congrats to the H.P. Monk team for winning the best big delegation at the Rutgers Model Congress Conference last week. Eighteen of our team members won individual awards, ranging from best position paper to most improved to best delegate. Our decade chapter will be competing virtually this week at the annual international career development conference. So we wish them luck. And the girls volleyball team advanced to Group One South State Finals, which is really exciting. Ms. Siddique from the middle school made a spring break poetry prompt challenge for her students. So submission should be coming in, and that's super exciting. The middle school combined their cohorts on April 19th. So there are about eighty students now in the building. On April 14th, there was a live virtual interactive environmental assembly program, which included the Illusion Makers Virtual Environmental Program, which was a super exciting experience, and the students got to participate in a TV-style game show to learn more about the environment and what we can do to help it. No updates from Bartle. And then at Irving, they look forward to celebrating Earth Day this Thursday. They'll be painting birdhouses, planting flowers, giving tours of the garden, hearing a read aloud, and much more. And then next week at Irving, they're hosting their first-ever Neurodiversity Spirit Week, which is really exciting, and they're going to culminate the week with bubbles and music out on the playground. And that wraps up this report.
Polly, thank you very much. Any board members with any questions or comments? Okay, well, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Taylor to give the superintendent's report looking ahead to the summer and the next school year, starting in September.
Thanks, Mark. Before I get to that, I do want to follow up a concern of which I was made aware last week regarding the middle school math program. And so I invited Dr. Nikosia, you can wave, Dr. Nikosia, our Director of Curriculum, whose main specialty is STEM mathematics included. So before I have Dr. Nikosia say a few words about the math program, let me just set the stage and point out to some board members and members of the community who are here what that concern was. We, several years ago, began the process of wanting to merge two of the three levels of our math, I should say, two levels of our Math Six program. Previously, we ran a Math Six and what we call Six A, Six Advanced level of sixth-grade math. It has been our intent to combine those classes and create what we're going to call Math Six Plus. And Dr. Nikosia has been working very closely with the stakeholder group. That's included scholars from Rutgers, a few parents, teachers, and at least one member of the board, me, in conversations that led to a listening session that we had for the community just before the pandemic. So about a year and a half ago. It was our hope that we would be able to launch the program this year and the next year. Unfortunately, because the pandemic decided to intrude on all of our business and personal lives, we decided to put things off for a year. So I do want to make sure that the board and those members of the community who are a little out of the loop about this topic are aware that last May 29th, May 29th, 2020, Ms. Brady sent out this letter in which we, through which we pointed out to everybody that because of the pandemic, we were going to put the Six Plus plans off. However, we were going to place all students in a Math Six program. And Ms. Brady points out that she recognizes, we recognize that some students need more support and enrichment. So here we are, and I think a year and a half away from our plans. Many in the community have forgotten what we were up to, and that's perfectly reasonable because of all the things that have been going on the last year and a half. So we're going to remind everybody about our mission. The parallel concern was that, that was brought to my attention last week, is that we were not initially going to offer a seventh-grade algebra, pre-algebra, algebra program. And our initial thinking was we were concerned about the kids not having the proper instruction they need this year, pandemic year, going into next year. We wanted to slow things down. That being said, I met with Ms. Brady, Ms. Sukow, the Assistant Principal of the Middle School, and Dr. Nikosia last week. And Dr. Nikosia is now going to share some of what we ended up talking about, and hopefully this does address people's concerns. So Dr. Nikosia, you have screen sharing rights.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you so much, Dr. Taylor. Just get myself set up here. One second. Okay, so thanks again for having me on. It's good to see everybody tonight. I'm excited to talk about some of the updates about our Math Six programming and to address some of the concerns that the community has. So first and foremost, to Dr. Taylor's point, the teachers and I.
You go through it a bit. You always say we understand.
All right, Dr. Nikosia, I have to remind everybody who might be here present, please make yourself muted. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you.
You're good.
We, we met a bunch of the teachers, myself, Ms. Brady, met to talk about math placement for next year. And typically, we do offer three options for our sixth graders going into seventh grade, which is typically algebra, pre-algebra, and math seven. Algebra being a two-grade level jump in mathematics, pre-algebra being a one-grade level jump, and math seven being the next-grade level advancement for math. Due to a lot of the concerns that Dr. Taylor brought up, we explored, you know, not offering, you know, algebra for our students next year for a myriad of reasons, and I'll get into those in my presentation. But we were putting in math seven and pre-algebra. So just to, like Dr. Taylor said, sort of reorient us to our middle school math redesign that we initiated a couple of years ago. We started in 2018 with a committee of stakeholders that began the work to detract our sixth-grade math program. Because as we know from the research, that detracting math classes provides more rigorous curricula for all students, and it helps to close our significant math achievement gap that we have at the middle school. So the idea was we were moving away from Math Six and Math Six A. And instead of merging the two courses, we were really offering a Math Six Plus course, which was more options for all students. So it was going to be a more rigorous curriculum for all students, even our Math Six A students, by providing complex tasks, rich performance task assessments, and we'd still cover all the sixth-grade standards and some of the major standards from seventh grade. So offering options that didn't exactly exist in our current Six A curriculum and putting in a new curricula that offers a lot more opportunities for all students. In addition, I wanted to address some of the professional developments that happened, that has happened and will continue to happen for this type of programming. This past year, we brought in a math, two types of math coaches for support for the teachers. One was Mary Oats from Conquer Math to meet with the sixth-grade teachers to work on best practices and scope and sequence, essentially trying to fit in the curriculum within the time span and the schedule that we had this year. We thought that was very, very important to do. In addition, we brought in Dennis Sheeran, who's a math expert that worked with the teachers in the spring of last year and in the beginning of this year on differentiated instruction. Moving forward in a look ahead to next year, we'll continue work with our best practice strategies and scope and sequence with Mary Oats, our math consultant, and we'll look to bring in complex task training. We were not able to do that this year. That type of work really works well with face-to-face type of professional development, and it was just really hard to schedule that. Our complex training expert is Dr. Dan Batty from Rutgers University Graduate School of Education, and trying to make it work remotely just seemed to be very complicated. So we figure we would offer that in person next year for the teachers. So, in the spring of 2020, like Dr. Taylor said, that we sent home a letter postponing that Math Six Plus course due to the circumstances that caused, you know, the disruption to the plans, the pandemic, the emergency school closure in the spring. The committee met and overwhelmingly agreed that it was best to postpone it a year to allow our incoming sixth graders an opportunity to, you know, fill in any gaps they had from the closure with their fifth-grade standards and make sure that we really addressed the sixth-grade standards to the highest level of proficiency that we could. So all students were placed in our Math Six course, and we did focus a lot on enrichment and support. So I know, for example, our sixth-grade students received some problem-based learning tasks, performance tasks, such as creating food truck menus during their decimal unit and things like that. So they had some opportunities for enrichment, what we call low-floor, high-ceiling tasks, in which all students can find success with the tasks, with the math tasks that were presented, and providing the necessary supports to make sure that any student that had some of those gaps or issues from the spring, that we address those as well. So some of the problems that we faced collectively as we talked through math placement for next year for our current school year, and I know that I'm, everybody is already familiar with this, but just to remind you and reorient everybody, that we offered three days of synchronous instruction. We had some highly unpredictable changes to the schedule, Wednesdays being one of those on-again, off-again changes. We had some changes to our asynchronous instruction in terms of it being required, then not required, and things like that. So all of those changes really resulted in struggles to get all of our students to the highest level of proficiency they could with meeting the sixth-grade standards. So again, the...
Excuse me, whoever, you know what? I got it. I was going to mute you all, and then go ahead. You're good.
Okay, thank you. So again, we noticed that there were some struggles with getting our students to these high-level proficiencies that we normally would have in the past with those unpredictable changes. And so, like I said, we met as a department, and the sixth-grade teachers just felt that the students collectively probably weren't strong enough to jump to grade levels to do algebra in seventh grade. So when we put out the letter, we put out the letter with the options of going to the next-grade level, Math Seven standards, or sort of moving up one grade level to our pre-algebra standards, with the caveat in the note that, the note did indicate to contact me to discuss other mathematics, you know, arrangements if necessary. The other issue that we had in terms of the current school year is typically we offer, in the past, we always offer the Algebra Iowa Readiness Test. It's a paper-based test that really provides us a rich data point to determine students' algebra readiness. And that's a, that's a big factor for that, for placement into that class. We explored some options for some online algebra tests, but we collectively did not find one that would reliably give us the data we need and was valid enough to do while at home and not being proctored and things like that. So we felt that because of that, we just didn't have, you know, the necessary data points to make informed decisions about algebra placement. So that was sort of what led us to offering, you know, pre-algebra and algebra next year with, again, the move toward going back to our regular, hopefully regularly scheduled programming of options the following year, in the event that we're, you know, back to normal and running our more rigorous curriculum to provide opportunities for all students. So, but we do understand that that is causing some concern with some of our students and families in the district. And we wanted to address that tonight. And so one of the things that we would consider is still offering algebra next year, but I want to be very careful to make sure that we provide an equitable opportunity to that high-level class. That's really something that's important to us. And, you know, we can offer the algebra readiness assessment. And one of the things that Dr. Taylor, Ms. Brady, and I can work on is how we offer this opportunity to take the readiness test for all of our students. So some of the things we might have to consider, obviously, is it's relatively easy to do for our in-person students, but we would have to probably consider sending staff members to homes to allow all of our students to take this test. So we're trying to consider options to make it equitable. One of the concerns that I had was if parents just called me and said, "I want my child to go into algebra," which is completely fine, and we support that decision. My concern was that it was a barrier that if a parent didn't speak up, that their child wouldn't have access to that. So there is a, I want everybody to know that there's a delicate balance between providing those advancements in our math placement with doing what's, you know, best for students' academic needs, but also their social, emotional learning needs, you know, throughout this unprecedented time. I hate saying that because I feel like it's being said a lot, but that's really our concern, is trying to find that balance. So again, I'll let, you know, Dr. Taylor pick it up. But, you know, trying to, trying to find what will be right to ensure that all of our students have access to take the assessment and have an opportunity for algebra next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Nikosia. So we, I do allow questions from the board when I make presentations. So it looks like Ann Gowen has a question. So Dr. Nikosia, stick around a few more minutes and...
Absolutely.
Maybe you can help me field these questions. Ann?
Hi. Well, first of all, thanks to both of you. Thanks, Dr. Nikosia, for that explanation. I just want to, could you guys hear me? It's my, I'm having all kinds of audiovisual. Okay, great. Um, I wanted to say, first of all, how confident I am in the new Math Six, Six for All. Can I call it Math Six for All for now to make clear that I'm not talking about Six A or Six Plus? I think it sounds wonderful, and I know you have been working for years now to ensure the correct supports are in place so that students will get both math-savvy kids, who are excited about math, will get to go a little farther, and kids who find math to be more of a challenge, will get the support they need to cover, you know, sixth-grade math. I think what you may be hearing from some parents is concern that this letter back in May that we all received, well, not me, I'm not a sixth-grade parent, a fifth-grade parent, whatever. The letter said that, you know, it'll be Math Six next year, and we're going to differentiate in Math Six. So number one, we canceled Math Six A without a lot of talk about why, even though we were going to, you know, push the new math off till this coming year, this next year. And then we implied in the letter that we were going to differentiate, meaning... So I think parents, many parents assumed that they were going to have, their kids were going to have the opportunity to go a little bit faster and get up to algebra. So I just, while I'm super confident about this program, I am a little disappointed that we weren't able to communicate that clearly to parents back in May of this year. I think you may be, so...
Understood. Thank you, Ann. Monique has her hand up as well. Go ahead, Monique.
I meant to put that down, actually, because Ann asked one of my questions. I just wanted some clarification on what the concerns were that were expressed. And I guess, again, thank you, Christina, for the presentation and refreshing us all on where we are with things. I guess my question is about the access to the assessment being kind of one level of equity. But I'm just wondering if you're thinking ahead in terms of what the results of that assessment show, right? That pre-algebra assessment show in terms of the equitable distribution of, you know, results in that assessment. So if you're not already thinking about that, you know, which I'm sure you probably are, but just to kind of tie that into the response or the, yeah, the response, what happens next after the assessment results are processed.
Okay. Do you want us to comment on that now, Monique, or are you stressing?
You don't have to. I'm just... Yeah, just to be mindful of that, and I'm sure we'll be talking about that in the coming months.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, so one of the things we talked about on the math committee meetings was if we're going to have very, very heterogeneous ability classes and do a lot of differentiation, it was important to get the student-to-teacher ratio down. So what was the student-to-ratio and to-teacher ratio in those classes this year? I mean, was it lower in order, because it seems like if the student-to-teacher ratio was what it was usually, then I can understand why not very much differentiation happened.
Chris, I can respond to that question by tomorrow, once I talk to Kate Brady and find out what that, what those numbers are. Yep, so I'll do that by email. Okay, Chris?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ann, back to you.
So I mean, I guess a confusion that I know some parents had was why did we decide not to offer Math Six A this past school year? Was that because of a scheduling issue, or we didn't think we'd be able to do Math Six A in the shortened instructional time?
Yeah, the committee felt, on the committee, let me just preface that, on the committee, we have some fifth-grade math teachers. And I think because of the emergency school closure in March, having lost a couple of months of instruction, there was some concern. I reached out, Ms. Fisher, for example, a fifth-grade teacher, you know, had concerns about not being able to provide, normally they provide some more advanced options for the fifth graders in the sprint, you know, getting them ready in the spring, and they just couldn't, they just, those fifth-grade teachers were... I give the teachers a lot of credit if I don't say it publicly, because, you know, especially in the spring, when things hit the proverbial fan, it was very hard to provide the students the necessary means to find success. So we, as a committee, felt that it was important just to provide everybody with, sort of meet everyone where they were at in sixth grade and, you know, hope to get them to a better place. That was the goal.
That totally makes sense. Thank you. I think parents just got a little confused about what was happening.
Of course.
But thank you so much for explaining.
Chris, back to you.
Yeah, if I could just add one thing. I'm glad that the district is trying to be careful about accelerating because it's so important not to accelerate unless people have really mastered the middle school math. We see so many people at the college level who are failing out of their STEM course because they've gone too quickly through the middle school curriculum and haven't really mastered it. Have been maybe encouraged to be in these accelerated programs when they were really just struggling and should have. So, yeah, for the, for these students, you know, putting them into a more rigorous or accelerated framework could really be harming their chances of getting a STEM degree. I just wanted to add one other thing. This isn't only happening at Highland Park. I mean, every, everybody who's teaching math that I know has covered less material this year. And not only that, but is really, it's harder to assess where people are, and you don't want to accelerate them without really having confidence about what they know. And it's just been really hard this year.
Thank you, Chris.
Well, if there are no other questions or comments, Dr. Nikosia, thank you. You can step out if you'd like. I'm going to transition to my next presentation, which will have me focusing on the plans I committed to sharing with the board and the community tonight for the summer and the fall. Now, please be mindful that these plans are, they're solid plans. We're still working on details. We are already in the process of hiring staff, recruiting and then hiring staff for the summer, who will have, inform us about the nuts and bolts of the program. So we want to make a collaborative process, planning process for such things as lesson planning for these programs in the summer, types of activities that will be facilitated, specific activities with the faculty who will be supporting those classes. But before I get to the summer and the fall, I do, I did get a couple of emails from parents, guardians over the past couple of days about what the rest of this year looks. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands with the last two months of schools, of school looming, how things are going to play out. I'm committed to the four-hour instructional day. My primary reason for doing so is clear recognition that more than four hours spent in a virtual learning environment is, is not good. It's damaging to our, many of our students' well-being. Their mental health, as well as their physical well-being. It's very hard for me to imagine kids sitting in front of screens with four hours. And the reality is that, at this point, 70% of our student population is learning from home. Even if those numbers shifted a bit, the vast majority of kids are at home. So am I going to increase four-hour day? The other reason is actually more... has to do with more about logistics. Increasing the four hour day would mean I would have to offer lunch, which throws a curveball in our safety and health protocols. Very few school districts in our neighborhood have gone that route because it's been so difficult to maintain health and security. You know, one, health and safety. One of the things I'm proud of so far is that Highland Park has, for the time that we've been in session, despite a couple of speed bumps, been able to keep the the, the number of positive cases reported among the student body and the staff body at a relatively low numbers, particularly compared to our peers. So I think what we're doing is, is the right thing, and we're going to continue to do that, thanks for the rest of the school year. We will continue through June to maintain three foot distances at Irving and Bartle. Both Ms. McNally and Ms. Knapp have been working with parents and guardians who were, have their kids on the waitlist to switch back into the school buildings. At any time, we think we can, you know, open up a little more room, a little more space, we will do so, and we'll continue to try to take students in. Right now, I believe we've, we've exhausted what we can from the waitlist. There are still some people waiting. I know at Bartle, to see if we can bring their, their children into the school building. At the upper grades, we are currently and for the unforeseen future, going to maintain six foot distances in our classes. As you know, the only way that we can shift to a three foot distance model is if the local community spread drops precipitously. And right now, it hasn't, although today I understand we didn't have any cases. That's a good sign. And if the trend continues, I have no problem directing the principals to remeasure our classrooms, prepare for bringing more students in, assuming we can accommodate them because we'll be moving to a three foot distance model. So that's where things will stand throughout the rest of the year. I don't anticipate major changes. At the elementary schools, you know, last week, we, two weeks of school in June are mostly having kids outside. We're hoping to get as many kids as we can at Irving and Bartle to participate in the field day activities we facilitate, where we're planning on doing them outdoors for, for many students who might be, as might be interested. It'll be tricky, but we're going to, we're going to really make it a special spring as the kids start transitioning to summer. So speaking of summer and fall, the mantra that I have used among my leadership team and that the staff and faculty will be hearing between now and June, and that I want to impart on our district community is moving into summer and fall, it's all, it's all going to be about accelerating, not remediating, accelerating. In other words, moving forward, not taking a step back, primarily because when you think of remediation, you think of a deficit model of teaching and learning, thinking about all the deficiencies that kids bring, not the, the proficiencies. And I'm sure the question, which I'm going to address in just another slide, that some of that are meeting have is, well, how, how are you going to address the deficiencies, the skill gaps that kids, many kids are notably going to come away from this school year inheriting? I'll get to that in a second. I just want to point out again, though, why we need to move forward. In other words, next year is going to be having our kids move to the next set of curricula and not backward, because ultimately this deficit way of thinking about our kids, focusing on remediation, fixating on remediation, is going to discourage student interest in continuing learning and certainly is going to foster the learning gap. It's just never, that learning gap is never going to go away for some of our students. And, and for the adults in the room, just imagine you're, you're in college and you, you go to the next year sophomore, junior, senior, and all your professors tell you, look, we're going to have to repeat a lot of what you did last year because we can't be sure that you actually got it. That can be a crusher. That can be a crusher. We want to look at next year as an opportunity to be reinvigorated about their learning. I just want to clarify what I mean by deficit based learning and asset based learning. It's two ways of of thinking about kids and how they grow academically, cognitively. We could either, as I said earlier, focus on the deficiencies or we could focus on the things that kids bring to us. Now, keep in mind that even though we recognize that students didn't get the same instructional contact time with their teachers and, and those who didn't respond well to the remote learning modality may have flailed academically. Our kids still learn things. They may not have learned book things necessarily, but I'm sure they learned how to be more tech savvy. I'm sure some have explored hobbies or different things that they thought they could do and, but never had the time to do. We need to leverage those things that the kids picked up this past year. They learned in, in some cases how to manage their emotions with the help of parents and guardians. Not all students, but, but many did. Those are assets, and we need to leverage those assets. Again, that's why we're moving forward and not remediating. So, so what does that mean? And how can you possibly, as I suggested earlier, move forward still recognizing that there are going to be some skill gaps? We are prepared to take two approaches to helping students recover those gaps in knowledge, which are likely going to be most apparent in some of the more skill intensive classes like science and particularly mathematics. Our INRS system has been very, very effective. Every school in the state has to have an INRS committee. And these committees are examined, that they're, by the way, they're, they're groups of teachers, counselors, the principal is always a part of the INRS committee and from time to time, parents and guardians. These committees focus on the information that we glean from the kids' work in the classroom, you know, how they're performing academically, how they're getting along with other kids. When they are referred to the committee because of great concerns, either a parent, guardian, or a teacher has about, about the student's performance in the class. And again, performance doesn't just mean academic performance. It could mean things like at the lower grade level, how children are getting along with other children, how students are self-regulating their emotions, keeping them, keeping their emotions in check when they get upset. So we're going to leverage the successful INRS process when we need to identify those students who we, whose skill gaps we can address in the classroom as we move forward next year and might need additional push-in or in, in some rare cases, pull out support from additional faculty and individuals we're going to hire, some of the federal money that we received to provide additional, what we sometimes call basic skills instruction. The main approach, though, to helping kids fill in those gaps is going to be to differentiate instruction and provide kids personalized support. Teachers are going to be exposed to more professional development, excuse me, in the area of differentiating instruction come the fall, those days ahead of the students' return. We expect a full day schedule next year, pre-pandemic like schedule, including the students who Governor Murphy is telling us may still qualify for virtual learning. It'll be a full day. Now, I just said earlier that I find, you know, more than four hours to be on a screen, onerous. The leadership team and some stakeholders in the district will likely be talking about how we can accommodate the handful of virtual learners next year with a full day without inundating with, with more screen time. We have between now and of course, summer to, to work through that. The plans for the virtual learning students, whoever they may be, and we're still going to need guidance from the state government and Department of Education about what standards will be used to determine who qualifies for virtual learning, will be to have some minor schedule enhancements, provide some, some dedicated teacher to student live instruction and otherwise follow the rumor zoomer model, what I call the rumor zoomer model that we have been so far using at the upper grades. We'll continue to use the Genesis online screener. We'll continue to check temperature and require, at this point, at this juncture, everybody to wear masks in all four schools. A lot can happen between now and fall. We'll await CDC guidelines, but what we're committed to is a full day of learning for all students with all of their teachers. The first 30 days will be about getting our kids back in gear, rebuilding community for, for many students, particularly at the early childhood level, restoring their, their skill sets in the area of interpersonal relationships, self-regulation. I talked about that earlier. We want to spend those first 30 days having everybody get to know each other again in the environment they're used to, barring a pandemic. We also want to be sure that using screening tools, which I'll mention in just a second, we are on guard for what the teen center at our middle and high school and I are calling COVID-19 post-traumatic stress disorder. I anticipate that every day for the first month, daily and at the middle and high school, every period, we will be engaging students in circle of talk conversations. We'll provide professional development for our faculty to help frame those conversations at the onset in September, early September. I anticipate those conversations will be, you know, 15, 20, 25 minutes, and they may dwindle in, in time as, as the month goes on. I mentioned that we want to use a screener to be able to identify students who were concerned are still having a hard time recovering from their experiences during the pandemic. Right now, we're using successfully a screener from UCLA. It's called the UCLA Brief COVID PTSD Screen, which you could Google and find out more about, although I do believe I also have a sample of the screener on the district's website. If you click the pandemic resources link to provide that net, that safety net, that support for the kids if they're in mental distress, mental health distress. We have very capable counselors, particularly who are trained in therapy to support the lower grade levels. We'll leverage our existing teen center group. And we're considering contracting the Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare to provide us additional onsite regular therapists, depending on the number of students who we find need support. Let me take a step back and just talk about summer for a few minutes, and then I'll take questions from the board. So the, the leadership team is currently framing the summer. And then, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, we'll engage, the staff will be signed up to work this summer in, in getting through the details, the nuts and bolts of the programs. The focus, besides being to accelerate, not to remediate, is also to reinvigorate, to make exciting schools once again for our kids so that they can go ahead next year, prepared more so in their head and their body than in their brain. We're going to offer six programs. I'm going to very briefly touch on, on all six. The, what we're calling the ship program will be offered for all grades K to 12 students. Ship times will be staggered, so we can provide transportation for students who take part. You'll learn much more about what ship looks like in two to three weeks. Essentially, it's going to be a a three-part program during the timeframe you see on the slide. One part will focus on academic enrichment, which will also serve at the high school level to help students recover some grades for credit that they may have lost if they didn't perform well this past school year. The second component of the three will focus on self-care. We're going to be helping our students learn self-care strategies like yoga and mindfulness that they can use independently, as well as engaging when they're in the ship program. And the third component, it's going to be a, what I call a fun component. I'll be collaborating with the local recreation department here in town. I've been meeting with Andrea Bay, the director. We have a standing meeting every other week to be, to plan this, this collaboration so that the K to seven students in the ship program can take part in arts and crafts activities, intramural activities, whatever, whatever else the rec department is offering. The rec department is going to schedule some activities around the ship schedule. So it can be within the timeframe you see here. The older students will likely be working into the intramural program that I'm going to talk about in just a minute. At the lower grades, we're going to offer something I call Friends Camp. It's a focus on social emotional wellness. We ran it last year with a small number of students. It was a good program. We're hoping we could expand enrollment. That'll be offered to all grades, grades K to five students during the times you see before you. I alluded to an intramural activity where we're going to run an intramural sports camp. I already have some some rock star teachers who our kids love showing interest to do this. It's going to be very similar, if not the same, as the intramural program that I started, thanks in large part to Anne Gowen's push since January outdoors. The kids will take part in things like box ball, track and field activities, everything we can accommodate them with. That'll be only offered to grades eight to 12 students, which we see, by the way, as an opportunity for the students who, who don't qualify or don't really fit into the rec department's intramural programs, an option to work with teachers they know here, to do things with peers their age, their older age outdoors. Camp Invention is something we're offering. I'm really excited about this, and Dr. Nikosia has been spearheading this. We tried to run this a couple of years ago, but we didn't have enough enrollment. This year, we're going to be using federal grant money pending board approval to pay for every Camp Invention participants tuition, which is a rate of something like $250 a student. We'll use federal grant money to do that. Camp Invention is a STEM project-based exploration experience for our budding scientists in grades K five. It's going to be a blast, a fun, engaging four hours of, of work. And two more programs. We're offering something brand new called Summer Music Academy. It's going to be an opportunity for kids who want to pick up a new instrument like guitar or keyboard to learn some basics from our expert teaching staff who actually brought the program to our attention. So they'll, they'll be teaching it. That'll be offered to all grades six to 12 students. And finally, this is another new program that we've never run before. We're calling it Cheer Advanced. Little do, a lot of you know, we have a math teacher at the middle school, Jennifer Andrew, who has become like a beloved teacher. It's her second year. She was actually a student teacher at Irving, and we, we, we kept her in-house, who was a Rutgers University cheerleader not too long ago. Her, she comes from a long line of cheerleaders. And so she's spearheading this effort along with Juliana Luxa to try to grow our cheer program at the upper grades by working with the students at the lower grades. And, and I mentioned there were six programs, but there is a seventh program, but it's our standard program. So I didn't want to deceive anybody to think that we have seven new programs. We have six new programs. Seventh program is our traditional extended school year. That'll be offered to all those students whose IEPs call for such. So that's a lot to chew on. I anticipate there'll be more for me to share in the next few board meetings. Does the board have any questions, comments?
A quick question, Scott. Sorry, I didn't get to raise my hand. Were there any other hands raised before me?
That's okay. I got you.
Um, yeah, just a quick question about the E S Y program and how, what sort of, you know, modifications or changes will be put in place in, in kind of the standard E S Y program to reflect the, you know, challenges that students who qualify for that program, you know, have, have went through this past year as well. Because I'm hearing with the other programs, and I'm just wondering again, what sort of accounting is, has been taking place in terms of developing the E S Y program this year?
So the E S, so this year's E S Y program is going to take into account all the modified IEPs. There were a lot of modified IEPs as a result of the pandemic. So we can pinpoint the individual, both cognitive and emotional needs that the kids have. That's going to be strictly aligned to the IEP.
Okay. Yeah, just thinking more about just coming out of the remote, the year of remote learning and what sort of fun, kind of recreational or whatever sort of enhancements. and what sort of fun, kind of recreational or whatever sort of enhancements are going to be added, if any.
I'll find out from Suzy, our Director of Educational Services, and get back to you. Just, Marilyn, give me one second. I want to make a note.
And I really appreciate the shift to an asset-based approach. And, you know, would love to see more of this through and through what we do going forward.
Well, I'm glad you appreciate it. I have to thank you and Michelle McFadden for being a force behind that initiative. I did a lot of research after we began discussing in committee that concept back in probably the winter. And I internalized it, and I saw the connection between asset and deficit-based teaching and learning to the idea of moving forward and remediation. I think there are real parallels there. Marilyn, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just a couple of practical questions. How many weeks? Like, when are you thinking of starting these programs? And how much to the summer are you anticipating?
Yeah, it's a great question. So the E S Y program runs for six weeks. That's standard. The other programs will run for a month, four weeks. I think the high school SHIP program, we're thinking of having a run a fifth week to help those students who need to recover credit. So we might run just the high school SHIP program for five weeks, but everything else will be running for four weeks. Starting right now, we're looking at July sixth start. And again, more details will be provided ASAP.
And then my other question, which you may not know the answer right now, is is there a plan? Are you thinking about how to attract students to this? Again, looking at equity, getting the word out to, well, you know, all diverse levels of the community and those students who do most benefit, could most benefit from the acceleration. How are we going to get them in? I think it can be a challenge.
Yeah, so that's come up. We haven't finalized plans, and it's certainly been on our mind. We'll probably get to it this Thursday because what I just shared with you was all finalized last Thursday. So our next step right now is to get as many staff involved as we can. We really need to staff this thing. We have so many programs being run, and we need so many staff. And then determine how many students we can accommodate and then figure out how we're going to market this thing. We already know we want to identify students through IRS. And, you know, some of the usual mechanisms we've used in the past for our Title I programs, you know, end of your benchmarks in terms of the kids who need the academic enrichment. But I want to impress upon everybody that the programs we're offering are not for students who, strictly for students who need to fill in those gaps. This is for students who want more, who want enrichment. They want to capitalize on some of the hobbies that they may have explored. I mentioned that. I'm sure they dabble in. But the marketing, the kids piece, that's going to come and getting the kids involved. That's going to probably come in another three weeks. We know times are the essence because parents might be making summer plans. Our biggest concern right now, Marilyn, before we even start thinking of students in terms of numbers, is making sure we have the staff. So far, forty-six people have thrown their hat in the ring. We need more. This is a really big lift. And if we go outside if we have to, but there's also concern that there might not be a lot of people out there who are looking for summer jobs, knowing that they need to rest.
Other districts are having the same issue, I'm hearing, because teachers are exhausted. And so to step up and be really excited and enthusiastic for a new summer program, it's going to be a stretch for some people.
We recognize that. I have a trick up my sleeve that I'm not ready to share publicly, but I want to talk to Anna Mark about it first. But I have some ideas about how we might be able to attract more staff. Yeah, yeah. Michelle?
Yes, so I wanted to say that my initial reaction is all positive except for my concern with who gets access to the program. So it really is for me a concern about access and opportunity because it would be a shame that the, you know, the parents are nabbing these spots. You know, the parents who are the most in the know, connected, word of mouth available are getting those spots that really, what you're saying, the intention of those spots is to, you know, get all of the kids that have suffered, which we all know everyone of them has in some way. But the kids who have, you know, really the greatest need. So I don't know how, you know, what kind of metric you're using to, I don't know if we want to say label or organize, you know, student groupings to make sure that, you know, the need is there in the way that it needs to be with limited spaces. And how are you going to address the typical problem that we find with, you know, very accelerated oriented parents nabbing the spots because they happen to be in the know before anybody else?
Well, first, let me reframe what you started out by saying. I think you think this is positive, but you have a concern. So there's really not a negative. I think there could be a negative if we don't follow through with what you're suggesting, and that's make sure that we give all the kids the access. I want to make it very clear if I didn't before, this is going to be open to all kids. But your point is well taken, is taken to heart, Michelle. If we have a limited number of slots, we're going to have to figure out a very careful way to keep slots open for all kids. I get you, and I'll be mindful. I'll bring that to the team on Thursday. In fact, I'll make a note of that in just a couple of minutes. Thanks. Any other questions, concerns? If not, that concludes my report. Mark?
Scott, thank you very much. Really good information, and I think we all appreciate it. I wanted to make one very short note before we move on, which is not on the agenda. So I'm going to share my screen, and I will find the correct thing to share, I hope. Yes. And I'm going to hit five. Let's see.
Here we go. Going through nicely.
Okay, so we, I attended a meeting yesterday managed by the H P Vax Help Group. I saw one or two people involved there. I think Rebecca's in our meeting tonight and perhaps one or two others. These are folks who have been helping people get vaccinated. The numbers in Highland Park of people who continue to get sick with this COVID-19 continue to be kind of too high. They're going down, but still too high. We need more people vaccinated. The last number I saw of fully vaccinated people in Highland Park was under 25%, and that's very low. So this group has been working to get folks vaccinated. And yesterday, a meeting was run yesterday evening that that talked about the fact that high school students who are sixteen and seventeen years old can now get the Pfizer vaccine. Also, of course, anyone older than seventeen can get the Moderna or the Pfizer. It's free. No health insurance is needed. It turns out now there is much easier to get appointments. I mean, it used to be that you spent hours online trying to get any kind of appointment. But if you simply sign up with this bitly H P Vax Help as a URL, or you send an email to HPVaxHelp@gmail.com, you can get help making an appointment. So if we have parents of sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen-year-olds who are in the high school in the audience, there's fifty-seven people last time I looked in this meeting. Or if you yourself need a vaccine, they will help you get an appointment. If you feel like you want to do it yourself, C V S now has lots of appointments available. And again, as of today, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are approved for the Pfizer. So you can go to C V S, you can make appointments, anyone sixteen and older, or you can go directly to Hackensack Meridian Health dot org COVID-19 and make an appointment. So the point of this is our students can get vaccinated, parents can get vaccinated, community members can get vaccinated. And until enough people are vaccinated, we're still going to be in this situation where it's very hard to do much in our society. So let's get vaccinated. Of course, let's wear masks. Let's end this. So I am going to stop sharing. And on right to get my, oh, here it is. Okay.
All right.
So now I am going to move on in the, do any board members have any questions about that? It was a very good meeting yesterday. It's just that we have almost sixty people here. I wanted to make everyone aware of this.
Mark, I should add that Mr. Lassner will be distributing an email to his students and parents and guardians tomorrow about that.
Wonderful. Also, as an aside, we ran a program from Penn Health at the Bartle School last week where one hundred and forty-three vaccinations were given. First on the list were our staff members. And then any unused slots were, you know, our educators. And then slots were given to community members. Every one of the vaccine slots was used. That's thirteen vials with eleven doses per vial. That's one hundred and forty-three doses. Second appointments were automatically made. It was Moderna, so for a month from now, for a second shot. And I visited. We took some pictures, met all the people there. It was really quite an operation. It looked like what's typically done in one of these clinics or hospitals. They really turned the gym into something. So let's move on. The next item on the agenda is a motion, and it's to approve the new contract with the Highland Park Administrators Association. So for the past six or eight weeks, our negotiations team has been negotiating with the Administrators Association. We came to an agreement. They ratified it about ten days ago. And this resolution will allow us to sign a new contract with them. It's a five-year contract starting in July of 2021. So I'm going to move it. So I'd like to move that we approve the agreement between the Highland Park Board of Education and the Highland Park Administrators Association. And could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. And we did discuss this earlier, and the board did ask the question. So I think we should go right to a vote. Linda, if you could do a roll call, please.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
abstain.
Ms. McFadden, Tina Cola?
Michelle, you're muted.
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you. Ms. Bruce?
Oh, I'm sorry. I said yes.
I got your yes. And Ms. Bruce, I got your yes also. Mr. Wes Levich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
I'm, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So we're going to go on to public comment. This is the new modified format. We're going to do a thirty-minute comment period. Please keep your comments to three minutes each. And if you have more to say, and if there are more commenters, you can comment after the board does its regular business. We have a very short agenda tonight, so the wait should not be that long. So item twelve, public comment, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and is reserved this time for your comments. Board Policies one, six, four, and one, six, seven establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Please raise your blue virtual hand. Give us your name and your address before speaking, please. Christine Hirsch, please.
Hi, good evening. Christine Hirsch, three thirty-three Felton Avenue. I just feel very confused about the whole math. I have a current sixth grader. And, you know, I hear what's been said like about the Iowa readiness test and giving kids these tests to assess them, going to the homes to assess them. But how are you even going to potentially do this if they haven't fulfilled curriculum? And I just don't understand how this keeps them on track to get where other kids were able to get to in previous years.
I can answer that question for Christine, Mark. So it's Christine, it's our intention, depending on the numbers of students who elect to take the test and show some proficiency, to provide them some support in the summer. The support would likely look like a modified SHIP program. If the numbers are small enough and the number of students who actually want that support are small enough, we might even be able to provide, carve out a whole different program. We can be flexible about that. But summer would be the time to help them. It's similar to a program that I've been talking to the Equity and Excellence and the Curriculum Committee about regarding advanced placement and honors classes. It's a little premature, but I'll just plant a seed. We're looking at running a summer program next summer for students who want to take an honors or AP class in order to provide them more access. So Christine, we would love to be doing the same thing this summer.
I mean, I appreciate hearing that, but I guess it confuses me with your whole model of tracking and not tracking. Doesn't that gear towards tracking? Which I fully support, especially in things such as math, because I don't think it's fair to keep all kids in one class, regardless of their level of skill, because that's the challenge for all the students and the teachers.
So you're referring to seventh grade algebra and the idea that we might be tracking kids at that level?
Right.
Yeah, so Christine, I mean, this is a longer conversation, which I'd be glad to have with you outside of a board meeting. But I can tell you initially, the committee that worked on this hasn't discussed seventh grade yet. We wanted to see how we manage sixth grade. But it is our intention to do something similar with seventh and eighth grade. We, I doubt we'll ever get to a point, it'd be ideal. I doubt we'll ever get to a point where we can have one single level in grade seven and eight. But we're looking to reduce the number of levels, but that's not going to happen in the near, near future, Christine.
So kids are still going to be able to learn on par with like-minded students, whatever level it is, if that makes sense?
In seventh and eighth grade?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and then, just to go back, you didn't mention the extra summer support for the math. Am I correct on that? So that would be in addition to what you suggested?
Yes, yes, I did, because that's not, that's going to be, it's a program in waiting only if needed. Again, as I said earlier, depending on the number of kids who qualify and the number of students who actually want that help.
I guess as a parent, I would just ask to let parents know, because again, they have to secure, you know, spots for summer camps. And I know many parents, you know, regardless of equity, would try to do the most they can to help their children.
Yep, okay.
And the other thing I did want to bring to the board's attention is the current state of the track being unusable for track meets and perhaps dangerous. And I know, Scott, you had emailed me back your response, and, you know, it's kind of a limbo kind of answer, like, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but this is important to the community. It's not only something that serves, you know, our middle school, our high school, the children who do the soccer programs there, you know, let alone just the community. So what is the actual plan and timeline for that?
Do you want to comment on that, Mark?
Yeah, so we've been working for two years with the borough and the county to try to put the money aside for this. And with the pandemic, we've run into one a holdup after the other, and we're continuing to work on it. I think if you want to know more about that, you should talk to Dr. Taylor offline. But we are working on it. We know it's in very bad shape. We know the field's in bad shape. And we have put money aside. We have put money aside. Rob, did you want to comment?
I just wanted to say, we have, you know, as you're just about to say, we have money that is budgeted for our portion of it. And this is, the idea is that this is going to be funded from multiple areas. The county originally was supposed to, or we thought was going to be part of this, but certainly the town as well. So we're waiting to kind of get that all coordinated. But our portion of it, our money, is we have set aside.
I mean, that's really, really good to hear, but again, two years turns into three years, turns into four years. We can go back and look at the Bartle playground and the fact that nothing has been done on this borrowed equipment from Irving that's now rusted. So again, you know, efforts were made to revitalize the Bartle playground. So again, you know, efforts were made to revitalize the Bartle playground. Nothing happened. Money is set aside. I don't want to see the same thing happening to a community resource. And like, what can we do as parents to facilitate this? And yes, I know it's a bigger conversation.
Excuse me. Call your state legislators, call the county. That's what we've been doing. Some of us have been busting our butt to try to get them to get come up with the money that they promised us. We have very few, we have very, very few resources with the 2% cap on us to put aside $1 million for a new track and field. So it has to come from multiple resources. We will do what we can, and it's not going to wait two, three, four more years. But it's very, very difficult to get any of these organizations to move. The borough is very eager to help us and work with us. They have the same issues. And the and the, this might have been done by now, except and not to blame everything on the pandemic. This might have been done by now. But the pandemic didn't help us, and it certainly put the county aside where they are virtually unwilling to help us or anyone else. So it will be done. We have put money aside. We're trying to coordinate it. We have about half a million dollars put aside. That will use up all of our, that will use up all of our capital funds, but we're working on it. So I can say, I would like to go on. Oh, Anne, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just real quick. I know, I appreciate you said that about the county, because my understanding was we were expecting a county grant, and it did not come through at the last minute. So that's why it's not happening right now, like we hoped, or you know, whenever people are not on the track. Dr. Taylor, is there a way to make parts of the track, specific parts of the track safe to do the short-term repairs as we did on the field?
We can do it.
Possible?
We examined that option, but we can't do it for the track. We could do it for the fields, which we did, you recall last year.
But there's no way to.
No, it's either replacement. The money we would have to commit to updating it would not be far off from actually replacing it.
Right.
Thank you.
Rebecca Hirsch, you were next with your hand up.
Hi, thanks for having me. Rebecca Hirsch, 331 Felton Avenue. I wasn't going to talk about the track, but just when Mark mentioned that we should call our legislators and we should, you know, call the county, what would be super helpful, because I think that we're a good community and we are good at mobilizing and organizing. If the district could just send like a few bullet points about like specifically what we could do to help, I really feel like everybody would pitch in, like we, the whole town would end up calling and bugging, you know, whoever we need to bug. So if you guys give us the info, I really feel like we can mobilize to help as much as we could. I think, you know, a lot of people want to help, and we know you guys are working really hard, and it's an uphill battle. Anyway, um, so. Um, oh, just really quick, I'm, I got distracted by the track news, but I'm really quick. Regarding the summer programs, they sound wonderful, and I'm really glad that the district is working at pulling those together. I do think that a lot of kids who might need help might not be flagged for help and or might not be able to come over the summer for whatever reason, you know, family reasons, camp reasons, like, just, you know, maybe like they need full day something, and they just can't do these partial day workshops, which is not your fault. But, um, so is there going to be a way that kids could make up some of the curriculum if they aren't able to do it over the summer? And I was gonna, I'm tying this in with a letter that was just sent by over 70 parents signed a letter to the board and Dr. Taylor asking for live instruction to come back on Wednesdays. Right now, there's not, for the middle school and high school right now, there's not real sort of standardized live instruction on Wednesdays, and we have a whole marking period left, and that would be a way to make up some of the lost ground. You know, I understand, you know, it's been a crazy year, but bringing back more formalized instruction on Wednesdays could help make up some of the lost ground to get kids better prepared for next year and sort of get them in a regular five-day-a-week schedule, even with the half days, like, you know, that's fine. So I just wanted to bring that. I'm not going to read the whole letter because I'm calling from my phone at another meeting, so I can't read the letter, but it was signed by over 70 parents. So a lot of, a lot of people support it, and hopefully it's something that people are willing to explore for the final marking period. Thank you.
Rebecca, I'll follow up with you tomorrow about that letter.
Okay, great.
Carol McCarty, please.
Hi, Carol McCarty, 43 Harrison Avenue. I just wanted to follow up with something that I had asked at the last meeting, and I think Dr. Taylor mentioned that he would follow up on it tonight, was just to confirm that are, is, are all staff going to come back in May? When will that happen? And what's the plan for if there are staff members who can't come back for whatever their reason is? Will, will there be substitutes found for those people for in-person instruction? Sort of what, basically what the plan is for staff coming back, for more of the staff to come back to in-person instruction?
I'm still committed to bringing everybody back May 3, particularly at the middle of the high school. That hasn't changed. Right now, I'm only aware of three individuals at the Middleland High School who have, still have good reason to be home. And they'll continue, we'll continue the model that we're using currently. So students who are in person for any of those three teachers will have to go to a class and zoom out to the individuals. Cal, I, you may not like that answer. I need to let you know. If there is absolutely no way I'm going to find a certified, particularly a capable certified teacher to replace any teacher who must still remain home. But I want to clarify that everyone but right now, the three individuals will be coming in.
That's great news. I like that news. I'm happy to hear that that many staff members are going to be coming back. And is that also the plan for the fall that, you know, say, for example, if those who, however many staff members cannot come back for in-person instruction in the fall, what you've said, you are shooting for full-time in-person instruction for everyone. Have you started conversations about that for the fall, given the fact that it sounds like there's a shortage of workforce, and this might take a little bit of extra planning and work?
So Carol, yeah, there's been a lot of internal discussion about the fall. I'll re-echo what I said in my presentation. It's going to be traditional, as traditional as we can get, at school year, at least by schedule. Everybody will be back. I'm not prepared to provide more details that you would like, because I haven't spoken to my faculty yet about some of the internal conversations the leadership team have had, and I've had with board members. But as soon as I'm prepared to do that, Carol, I will. It'll certainly be before the end of the school year.
Excellent. And my last question was about the curriculum that's going to be covered this year. At the last meeting, you, I had asked the question that I was really concerned that based on our children going to school for what is basically half-days all year long, and not really having new instruction on Wednesdays. How much of the sixth grade curriculum is my sixth grader going to cover? And I know that you're trying to concentrate on, trying to not concentrate on this deficit. But the fact is, is that each grade probably isn't going to cover what is in each of those grades' curriculums. So I'm still not clear on how we as a district are going to move forward with this.
If I can prepare a model that would exemplify what a teacher will be doing next school year to cover what may have been missed, I like to refer to it as filling in skill gaps. So, and by the way, Carol, we're talking mostly about the skill-intensive subject areas. Science and math in particular. If I can bring a model to show the board and the community to you all soon, I will. That's probably the best way, so you can see visually for me to explain what it would look like next year.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sure.
Michelle, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if all of the parents commenting heard Dr. Taylor's presentation, but he seemed to be very clear to me that we were going to not be forcing the curriculum that we missed to be caught up, per se. It, I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page, that that is not, that is not something that we are focused on doing for all of those reasons that Dr. Taylor was good enough to go into much detail about. So maybe, maybe that would make some of the parents feel a little better if they watched that presentation again.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer's iPad. I don't know which Jennifer that is, but you have the floor.
Yes. Hi, sorry. Jennifer's iPad is Jennifer Altman, 31 Walter. I have you guys on my iPad, so I can have my computer up. It's like, you know, the world of two screens this year, right? So, uh, thank you. Great presentations and everything. I keep really good. I did, I actually want to make another point, but just getting back to the Wednesdays. I would love to see the middle school and the high school go back to the swapped AB schedule for Wednesdays. Not just because they can cover more curriculum. And I know even like in my, my, my son is taking a bunch of AP classes, and they just can't cover the curriculum. So there, those teachers even just kind of running classes on Wednesday, which is a credit to them. But I do think that's a shame that the other, I think all middle school and high school students need to get, if we could switch back to that AB schedule where there's real classes on Wednesdays, and especially for the kids that are going in, since they're coming in, there's one cohort going in now, and we don't need the deep clean. It would be huge to get those kids in five days a week, especially since a lot of those kids are kids that don't respond to remote learning at all. So yeah, I just wanted to do one more push to really consider bringing the Wednesday instruction back for the last quarter, because it's, there's some real time to recap some of this lost curriculum. But but so just wanted you to consider that. The, the point I wanted to make, or it's really a question. Uh, as I probably stated, I have one child that did not respond at all to remote learning. So, you know, that's what it is, and her deficit was, you know, 13 months of lost school. And we can't really risk, you know, I'd be a negligent parent if I let that sort of happen again next year. So, you know, I have to know whether I need to consider, you know, other options, private charter, moving, whatever. But I'm not concerned, because Dr. Taylor, I really appreciate your, your plans for the fall, and they look wonderful and exciting, especially for parents of children that just couldn't do what happened this year, and and not necessarily necessarily fall to the schools, but it just was a lost, it was a whole lost year. And and speaking about the social emotional, it's, it's not even mental health. It's the sense of how they reframed who they are as a student, how they've reframed who, what their, what their abilities are. And I hate to see that last, especially when we talk about young adolescents and teens. So I just wanted to make a plug at this kind of April mark, that when you think of the fall, and I know you're planning primarily to have it be all in person and only remote, you know, if it's necessary to have remote, whether it's health or safety or whatever, that that all common classes at least have some sections where there's no computer involved in the teaching and learning in the classroom. I think the zoomers and rumors, or whatever we call it, that that killed, killed the education for students who cannot be taught from a computer. They just can't. And I think we probably have enough kids in the district that it would be essential that certain sections of all the common classes, I know, like, there are certain high school classes that there's only one section or two section that might be hard to do. But we have sections in all the middle and high school for common classes where there are sections where there is no zooming going on, because there's two, we can't, we can't risk another year of lost education for students who cannot be taught through a screen. And I mean, it sounds so silly, right? It seems so obvious. Some humans cannot be taught by a screen. That's why they don't take online classes or go to online charters or, right? They have to be taught by a human being to a human being. So just please make sure that you have some, every common class, middle through high school, has some sections that students that cannot be taught half through a computer, have the option to be taught human to human as it had been done, you know, prior to the pandemic. So thank you. Thank you for listening.
Jen, thanks so much. Andrea, you'll be our last speaker in this section, because we're just about out of time. And then anyone who wants to speak after the board goes through our short agenda is welcome to speak at that time. So Andrea, take over.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much. Andrea Alexander, 116 North Third Avenue. Just following up on a concern I raised with Dr. Taylor earlier today, my, I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that my daughter has not had more, she's an in-person student at Irving, and she hasn't gone more than two weeks in person without there being a quarantine this year. I know, you know, Dr. Taylor had said her class is kind of an exception. There've been, for whatever reason, a lot of cases in this one class. So it's just the luck of the draw, but I like cannot express how disruptive, how damaging this has been. I feel like I made the wrong choice sending her in person, because when she was remote, she would get to go to an app, sort of like an after-school program at a private daycare in town, and she got to socialize, and she got to go outside, and she got to play, and she had a lot of fun. And even though it wasn't an ideal situation, and, you know, like all the other first graders, she's really distracted on Zoom, and I don't know how much she's really learning. At least she was socializing and having some kind of like, I don't know, positive experience. And these quarantines are, she's stuck in the house. I'm working. I can't pay attention to what she's doing on Zoom. I, there's like no words to express unless you've gone through what our situation has been, how detrimental this year has been for her and been for our family. It's just, it's so stressful. It's so damaging. And all I just want to say is I, I understand, you know, there's still a lot of concern about the virus. There's still a lot of questions, and like, this, this situation isn't going to change this year. But I just want to say, in all the planning for the fall, I think it's really important that we also look at the quarantine situation and the quarantine rules. I know my understanding is that some districts have like a six-foot rule that you identify the children that maybe sit around the desk that are the closest, and maybe they zoom in, but not the whole class is shut down. I'm just hoping the fall, we can sort of reassess the situation, so there aren't classes where they only get two weeks at a time in person, and then they're home for 10 days, because it's not, it's not sustainable for anybody.
Andrea, thank you. Thank you. Um, so I'd like to go on to our agenda. So Michelle, could you present us with any committee reports and also your agenda items?
Yes, um, I have to do a little shuffling around of screens here, but I just wanted to say that tonight's committee report was actually written by Monique. We had a joint committee meeting where curriculum and equity and excellence combined, and one of our members sat out, that was Marilyn, thank you, Marilyn, so that we did not, you know, reach the numbers that, you know, would necessitate a public meeting. So we had a joint meeting because we had so much work to discuss that really could have been taken on by either of our committees, and so we just decided to attack these problems jointly. So I'll get back to the agenda review. That's item number one on our our committee report, but, and this should be, by the way, in everyone's email to review. Number two, it was our summer grade recovery program, which Dr. Taylor provided the district with all of the details in his report just now. And there is a component there that we did discuss in committee, which was creating some kind of culture change in regards to assessment and grading. So that we would be evolving, I would say, to a more authentic assessment approach. And, you know, talking less about percentage grading and more about authentic assessment. And so, you know, Rob, during our meeting, did raise an important point. What, you know, what do we do when we have students and faculty and, you know, families internalizing conventional grading systems and then having some sort of culture change presented to them? And so it's important that we just make it very clear that we, we all did recognize the importance of doing a grading culture change that would be, you know, respectful of all of the beliefs that we hold on the conventional system of grading, so that this would not be a forced type of change. So that this would not be, uh, a forced type of change. That, you know, came from administration down, but that we would have some real honest conversations. About the conventional grading system and how we can improve. Our idea of assessment when we, when we push for authentic assessment. The third item we discussed was the, um, language education. Basically, we, you know, this comes from the conversation that we had about leveled reading and, um, anti-black linguistic racism. So we had a really wonderful discussion about, um, the idea of. Languages that we perceive to be acceptable and unacceptable. Really, that's, um, the big picture take on it. But that, um, there is a lot of our understanding of how children come to school, speaking. Specific to the, um, the American black community and the conversational. And linguistic skills that are, you know, um. Not, they are not validated in the public school system. And that, that, you know, this is, this is part of a larger conversation, um, on anti-racism and anti-classism as well. So this was a rich conversation and, um. We did have two articles that, um, we discussed. And the links, there's, um, links inside of your committee report. In your email. If, uh, if you'd like to read those, I really do. Hope that we all get some time to read those articles and discuss this further. Which we plan to do, uh, obviously at our next meeting. Now, related to that, we talked about, um, other issues of language arts. This specifically involving leveled reading. So we talked about leveled reading groups. And this is kind of in relation to our tracking conversations of the past, but also making, um, sure that our leveled reading groups. Are not stagnant and that we're not, um, saddling kids with ideas of themselves before they are really. Fully fluent readers, you know? So making sure that our leveled readers are, um, appropriate. And that means, you know, appropriate to their interest. As well as their current ability and challenging them as well, but also making sure that, um. We have, uh, reading groups in place in the classrooms that have various levels. So that kids are not self-identifying and identifying others in the class as good or bad readers. And so there was an article that is, um, also relevant included in your email there. It's leveled reading groups don't work. That's the, um, it sounds like clickbait, but it's not. It's, uh, leveled reading groups don't work link in your email. And then we did have to, um, finish up our formal meeting. But some of us did stay around and we just discussed one other item and that was the High Tops, um, Sex and Family Life Education Program Proposal. Um, and again, the link is there. And we didn't really get too far into that conversation, but, um, the proposal did look good. We didn't. I don't think that we identified any issues with that. We also had some other things that we did not get to. Uh, that was the, um, generally. Unfortunately, we didn't get to a lot of the policy updates. We just ran out of time. And that is the report from both curriculum and equity and excellence. And I'm hoping that if there's anything that I missed. Monique, you can, um, you know, fill in the blanks, uh, during equity and excellence. And. Last thing I need to talk about is item number one, which was the agenda review. And there's just one item and that is the resolution to approve a new music course. Of intro to acoustic guitar for grade levels nine through 12. As an elective and that would be for five art credits for the high school, um, effective September 1st, 2021. And there is, um, an attachment to the agenda, um, giving details about that. But, um. That concludes my report for tonight.
Michelle, thank you. Any board members have any questions or comments? Uh, Darcy?
Hello. Yeah, I'm just wondering if I missed something or if I'm possibly remembering incorrectly, which is also entirely possible. Um, on our last agenda, didn't we table stuff about the, um. The stuff for the Wilson versus, um. Sorry, the dyslexia.
Yes, uh, Orton Gillingham.
Thank you. Didn't we table? I don't see that back.
We're, so I'm holding off until next board meeting because I, I, I want Michelle Rodriguez to be sure she addresses. Any concerns the board may have that were echoed last time.
No matter how it comes back, we'd still be on time to do whatever we wanted to do.
Well, yeah, it was professional development. Um, and I think we, we, we only missed. Two workshop opportunities, but there are plenty others that are upcoming.
Gotcha. Okay. Wonderful.
Good memory, Darcy.
Well. Clearly, like remember there was a thing about all of the details.
Very good.
No, the, the leveled reading conversation was actually out of that conversation. With, uh, Orton Gillingham. So it was just, um, it was a lot.
All of that in this district, you know?
But it is still, it is still, uh, it is still there. The heart is still beating and, uh. We're working on it.
I like it.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darcy. Anyone, anyone else? Okay. If not, I'm going to present the finance and facilities. We did not have a meeting which necessitated a report. Uh, we did do the, uh, budget presentation the last time and, uh, will be more, there'll be more on that at the next, uh, at the first May meeting. There's the usual, uh, bill lists, the travel reimbursement reports and number three. Uh, we have resolutions approving contractors for professional services. So we have Dennis Sheeran doing professional development for high school math teachers. And their interim healthcare doing, um, student, uh, sorry, nursing services per students, I E, I E Ps. From, uh, today through the end of the school year. We have a resolution number five to, um, accept sustainable jersey for schools grant by the N J E A in the amount of $10,000. Uh, that'll fund participation in the Little Sisters in the Know program at Bartle. Uh, to build high esteem and foster a positive self-image in African-American girls. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, uh, N J E A for that grant and also, um, uh, uh, Scott has, uh, thank Scott has brought in the. Person who, uh. Put together this Little Sisters in the Know program, uh, who I believe is a daughter of one of our ex-teachers here. Correct? Yeah. So that's wonderful. So number, number six is to, um, accept a, an Highland Park Education Foundation mini grant to Alex, Alex Romel. Uh, for $300 to assist the tuition, tuition cost for a certificate program embodied social justice. Number seven was the submission of a grant application for the 2020 safety grant through NJ Sig. Um, in the amount of $1,5986 for, um, for the next school year. Uh, Ju-, uh, July of, uh, 2021 to, uh, June of 2022. Aid is the approval of the contract renewal with Source for Teachers to surprise the substitutes. And, uh, no increase in rates. Uh, there's a rate schedule that was attached, but there are no increases. On numbers, excuse me, number nine and 10. Are, um, students who've, um. Two, well, number nine are two new students in the district. Who are going to be, uh, placed into, uh, out of district placements. Item 10 is an out of district transfer from one school to another. And item 11 is purchasing of U V C light automated disinfection, uh, units. Uh, for bathrooms across the school district. And this, this is, excuse me, we ran out of water. This is for $27,000, but that's coming from federal cares money. And that's the list. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Uh, Darcy?
Uh, yeah, um, you know. Tricky things. And I know we talked about this, you know, when he brought it up in terms of the budget. But, you know, my eyes kind of rolled into the back of my head when I saw those numbers for the, the three out of district placements. And wondering what that does to our budget for next year.
We're, we're looking into that now. These are new students who just came to our doorstep from other districts. So.
More details. And when Mark provided the new, new, new.
Yeah.
Students, that's, that raises a great big old red flag and a switch of a school. I don't know if that's a, you know, a. Net gain, net loss, you know, like, but then it raises the question, you're looking at like then possibly $200,000 worth of new expenses that we did not account for in our budget. So that's a huge deal. And I think, you know, I think these are the things that, you know, folks who really don't understand when they think about a public school budget. And how easy it is to get your budget set. You think you're great and then. You know, and it's not, of course, we have to provide services for all kids and give them what they need, but. It's very hard to keep up with these costs.
It's a biggie.
And the federal government does so little. And it really is, it's all falling on the local taxpayer. And when we're held to that 2% cap. It becomes shifting all of these funds into a special education budget, but they've got to come from somewhere. So they're coming out of the general education budget and it's, it's, it just gets worse every year. It just gets worse. It's unsustainable. It's terrifying. It's terrifying that, you know, two. Three potentially, you know, super costly placements fall out of the sky right as we've settled our, our budget. Sorry, done, ran over.
All right. Mike, your muted.
I, I couldn't agree more. I mean, you know, this always comes up. We have to provide these services. It's of course. We're legally and morally obligated, but, um, we. And, and Darcy, part of the answer is that. We don't always get students moving in, you know, sometimes students move out who are in special ed programs and another district pays. But it's seems that it's always going up. I think part of it may be that we're providing very good services. And so people move here, they like the school system. Um, and they maybe have a few kids or more, you know, more than one child and. Someone goes out of district and it's, in this case, we're talking about at least 140,000 new. And I don't know how much extra the strength school costs over the Rutgers, uh, Behavioral Healthcare Center. But it's certainly likely to cost us extra. This might be as much as 160 or 170,000 dollars that we did not budget. You're completely right. Chris, you had your hand up first.
Uh, yeah, since Darcy brought up the, the subject of the sort of, you know, lo- long-term budget issues. I mean, I, I, I have this sort of general impression that we're about a year away from a, a financial crisis, uh, which I don't know if I'm right or not. You know, just based on the figures that were, uh, presented at last meeting. Is, is that wrong? I mean, one thing we don't know is the federal aid situation. Do you know how much money we're likely to get from the new?
We're going to get millions of dollars. The question is how can we spend it or can we spend it? Also, it's one-time money. We can't, we can't put the money towards like, oh, we're going to hire 10 more teachers to do all the special ed. Because the money goes away and those teachers go away or, or not. Um, so that's, that's not the answer. One of the answers, one of the answers is that we have saved money, um, during the pandemic. Uh, this is the first year since I've been on the board recently and, you know, five years. Where we didn't have a crisis making the budget. You know, what are we going to cut? What are we going to cut? And we even were able to put extra money into surplus. So we haven't had surplus. The surplus has been going away. The surplus is better than it's been. It's not great. I mean, we have enough there to, for instance, do a good. A reasonable portion of the track and field, you know, that we've talked about. I think the law, it's not a year or two away. It's probably not four years away. The problem is with a 2% cap. And, uh, certain costs going up astronomically like healthcare and special ed costs. It's a systemic, not maintainable. Position that the local school districts are in in New Jersey. It's not only us, it's everyone. It's not sustainable when healthcare, healthcare, you know, it's kind of. Gone down slightly this past year because of the new chapter 44 law. That caps certain costs in healthcare for our staff, but, um. So that's been, that's been a savings. Uh, the state did give us more aid because our special ed costs went up a lot. More than in previous years. So that's helped us. But. So the next year or two or three, I think is not a problem. Actually, it's probably better than we've been. The real problem is with 2% caps and healthcare going up 10%, some years. And special ed costs going up by two, three, four million some years. It's not sustainable. That's the real issue. And I don't know, again, you know, talk about talking to our legislators, it doesn't seem to fall on years that are listening. And, and all this money that's coming our way, um, we were allocated 1.1 million dollars in, um. E S R two, S R two cares money. That's the grant from December last year when, when, um, the old administration was leaving the Congress, uh, passed that. That money is somewhat, um. Is somewhat earmarked. So we have to be, to, to spend it all will be difficult. Especially on what I'm going to call old programs or old needs. If we could, our surpluses could build up enough that we would have a four or five-year window. You know, we could do the track, we could do the field, we'd have a window where we'd have surpluses that we won't run out because we only get 2% increases. But 2% increases or even 3% increases aren't enough. It's really a problem. And so I'm going to stop, but I don't think we're in any crisis right now. In fact, I know we're not. I think Michelle, you were next and then Rob. Russ Leavidge.
Yeah, I, I think it's important for us to, you know, as the, as the board of ed, maybe to try to educate. The situation, you know, uh, the situation, uh, to educate the public about the situation that public schools like ours are in. When we have a 2% cap, that means that we can't go above that and get local tax dollars. We don't want to raise local taxes, but we need the money. There's no way for us to get it from the state. There's no way for us to get it from the federal government. And when we have governors in our past, um, making these types of political decisions to put a 2% gap. On local taxes, they get to say they did a wonderful job for the local taxpayer. Because they don't, you know, they don't want us to, uh, blow the budget and we shouldn't be using, you know, tax dollars in effectively. But we still have the requirements from the federal and the state, um, education. Administrators, I guess, from the board of eds, um, in those two places telling us what we can and can't do. I don't know that everyone appreciates that. That we have, um, really a targeted, um, war going on. Against us and it is in the name of. You know, privatization and corporate profit. And that's, that's what it is. I mean, whether it is a Democrat or a Republican, we are still dealing with the same things. It's. It's really important that people don't go to sleep in this time of, um, you know. Democrats being in office for, you know, for what it's worth in New Jersey, we have a Democratic governor. It doesn't seem to make a big difference as far as our school budget goes. So. I, I hope that we all understand what the problem is. And, you know, when we have. Lots of, uh, people very frustrated and, you know, rightfully so. This is not the place to come with those types of frustrations because there's not a whole lot we can do. You know, yes, you can, we can hold each other's hands and say, you know, we understand because we're all paying taxes as local residents, but, um. I, I don't know what we can do honestly, without some federal and state. Bunny. I mean, they owe us well over $6 million pandemic aside. Because of the funding formula of years past. So, I mean, yeah, the track looks terrible. I mean, end of rant. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Michelle. Rob.
Yeah, separate topic. I'm curious about item number 11. Underlying, I'm just curious as to what kind of system it is and who's installing it and then what's the long term? I'm, I'm just concerned that we're purchasing something, even though we're using CARES money. It's not necessarily feeling like it's coming out of our pocket now. But in two years, three years, four years, what's our maintenance cost on it? And is it something that we, you know, where's the recommendation coming from to purchase this disinfection system? And what's the long-term viability and do we even really want it?
The, the, we heard in finance, or perhaps I heard directly from Dr. Taylor was that we can't really control what happens when someone goes in the bathroom with a mask, some of our kids are congregating, whatever. So these are going into bathrooms to do serious, you know, UVC light automatic disinfection. And it may lose its benefit when we're not, you know, when this COVID-19 pandemic is gone, we may not care about this. I don't know if our administration has anything to add, but one of the problems we have is they give us a million dollars. I mean, this is a, it's a real use for now. This is a serious use and is worthwhile doing. They give us a million dollars. We can't buy a million dollars worth of masks, right? They have a list of what we can use the money for. A lot of it is unclear if we can spend the money on this or that or the other. This is something we clearly can spend the money on, and we want to keep the kids safe in the schools when they're not under supervision. Scott, do you have anything to add to that?
I'm looking at some of the documentation that Michael O'Donnell shared with the central leadership team. I think that's the meeting which you heard about this, Mark.
Yes.
The answer to your question about installation, Rob, we're going to do that internally with our own people, Eddie and Willie in particular. I have a doc spec sheet on it. I could send you if you'd like, since we're not voting on it tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll do that momentarily.
I do want to add one small thing, which is something about taxes and savings. If there's new redevelopment, taxes may go down, but we can still only raise the budget 2%. And that 2% is a fixed amount, but by the time the taxes get computed, because there's a new tax base, your tax bill may not go up. Well, those of you in the audience may not know it, but in two of the last five years, your tax bill didn't go up. Part of that is new development has happened. We raised to, we raised the, our numbers 2%, and I'm putting that in quotes. But we don't really see any benefit. We get that, whatever the number is, 800,000, that's what we can raise. Perhaps new special ed programs cost us a million, so we had to cut somewhere. Perhaps the healthcare cost, the health insurance cost went up 1.2 million. We had to cut somewhere. Also, if we refinance bonds, Linda has worked with our bond folks and we've refinanced bonds twice. That saves us a fortune. So that's a fantastic thing. We're saving money, but it's on your tax bill. Your tax bill doesn't go up. We're not, we're not getting more money to run the schools. So it's really a problem. I, I want to just, you know, give the whole point out, it's, it's really, really a problem. But I do want to add, but to Chris, we're not going broke and we're not going to go broke in the near term because we've put a little bit more money, maybe more than a little bit more money away in surplus. But it's really a bad situation. It's been a bad situation since I first joined this board five years ago. It's much worse than it was in past years, you know, in 10, 20, 30 years ago.
One potential ray of hope is that Biden did campaign on tripling Title II and in his budget, he did ask for more than double our current triple one funding, our title one fund. So
I saw that.
That, that would help. It's
It would help.
All the problem, but it will absolutely help. If we were to just get more funding that's not tied to mandates, that in and of itself would be miraculous. And as Marcus said, this, that, you know, the CARES funding, while helpful, you know, it goes along with that federal stipulation of supplement, not the plan. Here's money, but you can only use it for these things. Even if you have this huge budget gap over here of, you know, $600,000, you can't use it for that. You can't use it for stuff you are already paying for. You can only use it for these things. And sometimes that doesn't help. Like now we've got a million dollars, but maybe we don't even necessarily need that billion dollars. So it's, it's kind of crazy, maybe.
And there's more coming that we're not going to know how to spend if we read the newspapers. It's insane. It's insane. Oh, and by the way, some of you heard me said this before, but I can't resist. When I was on the school board 30 years ago, we were getting, we were paying 20 or 30% of our special ed costs and the state was covering the rest. And we were all outraged. Why aren't they covering it all? You know, it should be the state's responsibility. Now we're getting a tiny fraction of that. It's really, it's really a shame. It's, it's really makes it. And it wasn't a 2% cap. We were getting 6, 7, 8% increases. There was a lot of inflation then. But we were getting 6 and 7 and 8% increases, and it was still hard. But this is way worse. This is so much harder and so much worse. Something is going to break. But I think, Chris, not now, because we have time. Let's move on, please. It's getting late. Anne, could you do the personnel?
Sure, thanks. All right. So we met on April 12. I sent out some rough minutes. Almost everything is confidential. We talked about staff potentially to be non-renewed. We talked about staff potentially to receive promotions. We talked about potential employment litigation and we reviewed the personnel policy on tonight's agenda. My impression of it, sorry, that is number 4125, employment of support staff members. My impression of it is that it's clarifying. Strauss Esme is recommending that we adopt certain semantic and generally clarifying changes and that it's not a substantive, not a recommended substantive amendment. So please do look over the policy as Darcy will tell you, but it's, it's not particularly interesting. Nonetheless, it's still, I think, important that we adopt Strauss Esme's changes. So that next time Strauss Esme proposes a substantive change, it'll be easy for us to compare the new document with the document we have, which will look like Strauss Esme's underlying document. Okay. So, uh, but the, on the agenda, almost everything is self-explanatory. So I'm not going to go through everything. Maternity leaves, leaves. We do have two new staff coming on board. We welcome Emily Schubert, Special Education Teacher at Bartle. Has she already been working with us as a student?
Yes, very successfully, which is why we'd like to keep, keep her going.
So we're delighted. Welcome, Emily. And Yuritza Rosinos, paraprofessional at the high school. Welcome to you, Ms. Rosinos. Transfers, ah, number 10, baseball. Thank you to Mr. Copperthwaite for stepping up and being the middle school baseball coach. After-school program assistants. Number 11, actually, I had forgotten about this, the before-after-school program staff.
Yep.
You have your eyes on it. Yeah, take your time.
Correct. Okay. Do you have a question about that?
Yeah, yeah, I did. I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to see what number 11 was. It says when the program is operating, the program is currently operating, now operating, right? Okay. So when Bartle or Irving students go to school for a half day, are they then, is after-school start right after school as opposed to at 3 o'clock?
Correct. And, and we're also accepting virtual-only, learning-only students in case they want to participate in aftercare.
Has that information gone out to parents? You know, I don't see that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've had a nice, yeah, we've had a nice, healthy participation.
Okay, that's fantastic. Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Additional instructional periods, I believe this, number 12, sorry. Thank you to our math teachers for covering some additional classes. I believe this is to cover a maternity leave and of course, we appreciate it. Hold on a second. My alarm is ringing. I'm sorry. Hey, guys, can you turn my phone off? Sorry, pretty too complicated for me to do while reading the minutes. Please be quiet. So thanks to Ms. Finklin, Finklin and Mr. Lee, Mr. Moore, Mr. Ruttishaw. Number 13, change of program hours. 14, grade recovery teacher. 15, okay, nothing else, non-self-explanatory. Are there any questions? All right, Monique, is that your hand or was that just your hand moving in the video?
No hand raised.
All right, I'm all done, Mark. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Darcy, would you like to go over the policies with us?
I would love to. Although I, listening to all the other committee chairs realized that I was completely remiss and I wrote up no minutes from our policy committee's April 13 meeting. So I will go back and cobble some of those together and send those out. Although I have to admit, there was nothing terribly scintillating in our meeting other than me explaining how I have been frantically trying to double out three policy alerts worth of policies to our committees so that we can get ourselves finally, and hopefully once and for all, caught up on policy. So the policy committee did look over the policies that were for us. As you guys know, I've started divvying up the policies between our, between our committees. So the ones that were for the policy committee, we did look over. So you'll see 10 of those on the agenda tonight for first reading. And then, as Anne mentioned, there was one, somehow Anne's committee got off pretty much scot-free with only one policy that they need to review. And I'm grateful to Anne for having her committee review that one policy. And so we just have now the finance and curriculum and equity and excellence policies to go over. And what I would suggest to those committees, because it can be a total drag, particularly when there's like a whole hunk of them to go over and you don't want to suck up your entire committee meeting with policy, is one thing that we spent a fair amount of time discussing in the meeting was just kind of new procedures for kind of smoothing all these things out when new policies come up. And one thing that we will be sure to add to our process is that when Susan does that magic merge of our existing policy and the new Strauss Esme policy, that she spits that out to us as board committees, as Google Docs. So if, say, finance doesn't want to suck up their entire finance meeting to review policy, there's only three of us, we can just do it via Google Doc. We can all each look at those docs. We can put in our suggestions. We can ask each other questions and we can just do them that way. So I would suggest that to curriculum and equity and excellence as well. That, you know, if you guys don't want to have, you know, either take up your scheduled meeting or schedule a separate meeting just for policy, I'm going to go through the Google Docs that Susan put together this week. I'll make sure those get distributed out to the committees and you guys think about maybe even just doing them that way. You know, just telling your committee members, please look at all these policies by X date. And then, you know, once everybody's comments are on there, we can, you can ship them back to policy and we'll take a look at those and get them onto an agenda. So that would be my suggestion because right now we are trying to bang out these last three policy alerts and then we'll be officially caught up. And I've talked to Scott about, you know, in the future, having the, our board at HPschools.net email address connected to Strauss Esme. So whenever they send out a policy alert, the entire board will get a notice. We'll all know that there's a new policy alert. We won't get snuck by policy, you know, two or three policy alerts backed up. So we can hop on those as soon as possible because we do still have policies that we may want to tackle or, you know, policies that are, we're supposed to review yearly and we need to make sure we're getting all that stuff. And you can see on some of the ones that are here, even on this agenda, you know, I mean, there's stuff that we're, you know, we're pretty good and behind on, you know, in terms of like no child left behind stuff and testing stuff, it's just not up to date. So you'll notice that item three is also a bunch of policies that need to be abolished out of our, out of our policy binder because they're just no longer, they're no longer needed, like highly qualified teachers. I don't even know if that's not even a thing anymore, is it, Scott? I think that's just like, kind of, that's an old NCLB language that's just gone by the wayside. So there's also a handful of policies, policies that are being abolished. So, so that's about it. If anybody has any specific, you know, questions or concerns on the policies that are on the agenda, if you go into the policy folder, you'll see that what's attached there is all the Google Docs. So you are more than welcome to put a comment there or a question or whatever, tag me, tag Scott, and we'll, we'll answer those questions. So I think the nice thing about doing it that way, too, is, you know, we don't always necessarily have to, you know, read 12 policies before a particular meeting, you know, you can kind of read them a little bit more piecemeal because it can be a lot. I understand that. So particularly when some of them are 33 pages long.
Darcy, thank you. So no questions about that? Okay, Monique, equity and excellence. I know Michelle gave the joint report, but do you, did you have anything to add?
Not much. Thank you, Michelle, for going through all the notes. I would just add that in our discussion of the summer program, we did talk quite, I think substantively about the, how for high school students that the stakes, you know, are quite higher in terms of the graduation requirements and using the summer program as a grade recovery for those students. And we talked about, you know, having honest conversations with those students about the fact that, you know, we don't want this to be about remediation, but in a sense, we have these state regulations that they, you know, have to, we have to comply with for them to be able to meet their graduation requirements. So Scott did talk about directing, because we wanted student voice to be a part of this program planning for the summer. And so he did talk, Scott did talk about directing the high school guidance team to meet with, with the students and who need to be encouraged, you know, to participate due to their graduation requirements. And also just to, you know, present the situation and collect their input. So I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, noted that. And then additionally, just in terms of the policies, yes, Darcy, you were, we were right, thinking along the same lines as what you discussed or offered in terms of how to tackle these policies because we did not unfortunately get to discuss them in the meeting. But we left the meeting, agreed to go back into the files over the next couple of weeks and just kind of collaboratively note and edit and make our suggestions, you know, via the electronic docs. So we will be on it.
Wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
And that is the right way to do it, you know, working offline. I started looking at the policies before they were kind of merged and put into format. And you could, you could, as a committee, work hours, so it's, it's much better to do it offline. Okay, thank you. Any, any questions or comments? Okay, so let's move on to our second public comment period. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation reserve this time for your comments, and I'm not going to read the policy numbers. So if you have a comment or a question, just please raise your hand and give your name and address and we'll call on you. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go on to the president's report, which I don't have one. Does anyone have old business? The board. Anybody on the board have new business? Chris?
Well, we, we're not doing a liaison reports tonight, but since we had a meeting at the Commission for Universal Access last week and a question came up, I just wonder if I could
Sure, go ahead.
Ask a question about that now. Dr. Taylor, you, you had, the, the thing we were discussing was, was various, various pieces of accessible equipment like picnic tables and so on around town.
Correct.
Yeah, Dr. Taylor, you, you had mentioned that there was going to be some construction at the playground or area behind the high school. Do you, could you clarify a little bit more? You, you said it was something about water issues back there causing a construction project in that area?
I don't think it was, I don't think I brought that up. It doesn't sound familiar to me. Mark, do you recall us discussing that in finance?
No.
Okay, so, so the, the only renovation that's being planned at the moment is the renovation of, well, that's being looked into is the track renovation. There's
And, and we've discussed the Bartle back area as well. So those are the two sites outdoors that we would like to renovate.
Well, maybe, maybe I got confused with the Bartle issue. Is, who, who is that being planned in partnership with? Is it just the district or is it also?
Nobody yet because while we do have some money in savings, thanks to some fundraising efforts a few years ago by the PTO here, we don't have enough money lined up yet to, to have a viable project. So we haven't gone down the road of architecture. It's all that stuff.
The, the one thing that came up at this CUA meeting was they, they've apparently had extensive interaction with the rec department about what they feel is the proper level of accessibility for the different equipment that's being bought. I, I just wonder if we've already have a process in place to I, I, I just wonder if we've already have a process in place to consult with them.
No, but I can assure you that we will once we have a way forward. If we had the money lined up, we'd have to get the architecture, architects involved. And that would be the point at which we then meet with somebody from the commission.
Okay.
Right. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so if there's no new or old business, I'm going to move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Mark?
Yep.
Just real quick. I tried to hit the reactions. I hit the thumbs up instead of a hand raise. I'm like.
Oh, okay. I thought you were just applauding that the meeting's over.
Trying to hit the right button and not do it. I just wanted to put one thing on the record because I read this tonight and I thought it was really interesting because I think, you know, obviously, I know a lot of people have been very upset about the way this year has gone, you know, either in one direction or another, right? Schools didn't open up fast enough. Schools opened too fast. There are, kids are on the computer too many hours. Kids aren't on the computers enough. You know, like, it's just, it's kind of like a moving target, right? And I just, I get a, you know, a daily newsletter from AJ Spotlight, which I found remarkably helpful throughout the pandemic because it talks about the state numbers and the national numbers and all of the things. And one of the things they had in their newsletter tonight was the school numbers in terms of how many schools are doing what. And I just want to read it because I think it's really helpful and impactful because, you know, people that we may talk to or people who come to our board meetings and comment may talk to may not have the perspective of what's really going on in the entire state. And I think that's kind of important to just mention. So I'm just going to read this. So right now, currently, there are 186 districts with 170,000 students that have full in-person schedules at their schools. So you'll notice, right? Some may sound like 186 districts, but that's 186 districts with not very many kids. There are 69 districts with 219,000 kids who are still all remote. So it's what, you know, sorry, you guys are better at math, Chris and Mark, but it's about a third of the kids. You know, a quarter of the schools, but, you know, you know, maybe another two-thirds of the kids. And then there are 526 districts that are like us, that are serving nearly 900,000 students. So nearly a million of the kids in this, in the state are now in hybrid schedules. So while I understand that there are parents who think we should be all remote and I understand that there are parents who think we should be on five days all day, we're, we're right there in the middle, you know? And that's really the kind of district that we are, right? We're not a super affluent district. We're not a urban district. We're not, you know, like, we're kind of, we're awesome, right? Like, we're like a little bit of everything. And I think personally, I think we're right where we need to be. We have in-person instruction for the families and the kids who need it and we have remote for the families and kids who need it. And, you know, I just, I guess I want to give like a shout out to Dr. Taylor, the administrators, the teachers for really just trying to do their best this year. And I don't think a lot of people come to the board meetings and give a lot of praise or a lot of support or, you know, but it's been a remarkably hard year in so, so, so many ways. Never going to please everybody. We're never all going to agree on anything, but, you know, and I do appreciate that a lot of the folks who have come to comment, you know, do, you know, even couch their criticisms with, thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you for how you're hard you're working. You know, that we have that, you know, acknowledgement and of respect for each other that, you know, even though we may not agree with each other's decisions all the time, that we know that we're all doing our best for, for all of the kids because ain't nobody getting through this without some stress and strife and upset. So that's it.
Thank you, Darcy. I'm really glad you said that because it's been so incredibly difficult. And I mean, depending, you know, where you sit every day, every single day, for families with children in the schools, for our teachers, for, for our administrators, for board members, for families, it's really incredibly difficult. And.
That's the mental stress of what we see every day in so many different news, like, reports. It's overwhelming to think about so, all of the things that we're dealing with, right?
Lot.
Yep. All right, so anyone else? Because I'm going to move to adjourn. Okay, so I'm going to move to, I'm moving to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, good night.
All right, see you all soon. Thank you.